All right, I'd like to call to order the November 21st meeting of the Cold Spring Boarding Board of Appeals. And where are my notes? I'm Aaron Wolf, I'm the Chair. We also have Donald McDonald, John Martin, we have our new board member Laura Bozzi.
Bozzi.
Bozzi, and Eric Wurth. We are unpaid volunteers, residents of the village, and we are appointed by the Village Board of Trustees. We also have Michael Mel, our videographer and Board Secretary. On tonight's agenda, we were going to have approval of minutes, but I was late in getting my request into our village court to print the minutes. So we're gonna catch up on all our minutes at our next meeting, I promise. In the meantime, if anyone wants to see them, the drafts are on hand with the village court. Okay, then we are going to continue the public hearing for 41 Garden Street, and we have some new information there. Then we will have a workshop for 7 Fair Street for variances to conduct ceramics classes. And the last item on the agenda is a workshop for 21 Parsons Street to build a house in a vacant residential lot. I will be recusing myself from that because I live across the street, and Donald is our acting chair for that part of the meeting tonight. And for that project, most likely as it continues through the board process. All right, so let's continue with the hearing for 41 Garden Street. I guess, now that I know Laura, that you live on Garden Street, are you close enough to this property for it to?
I'm at 14, I'm at the other end. Is there a technical definition?
No. I think if either you or the applicant felt that it might be inappropriate for you to vote, then it would, it would leave that up to you. However, we also, when we talked on the phone, we discussed that you might not even want to vote, since you missed the first part of the public hearing, but again, I'm really glad to hear.
Yeah, well, I'll say I don't. I don't feel like I have a similar situation living across the street. But I may, I think I will recuse myself on the fact of just not having the knowledge of this, and particularly if there's a vote today.
Okay, I think there will be a vote today.
Yeah.
All right, so Karen, you have changed the plan, would you like to tell us about that?
Sure.
And then I want, after that, I want to read a memo from the Historic Board, or Kathleen, if you would like to read that or speak to it, tell me directly what you could, whatever you.
Hello again, my name is Karen Parks, and I'm here tonight with Maria and Tony DeMayo, who are the property owners at 41 Garden Street. I'm here to help present their proposal. So just to recap quickly, what we're proposing to do is a modest one-story addition to an existing single-family dwelling in the R1 district. The house is a brick ranch built in the 1960s. And the reason we are here is because we require a lot coverage variance for the proposed addition. Currently, there is an existing house and detached garage and covered patio on the property, which already exceed the allowable lot coverage. They're existing non-conforming lot coverage. And so here is a site plan with Garden Street at the bottom of the page, and the residence at the front of the property. The orange area represents our proposed addition, which is approximately 282 square feet. And we have the detached garage, and adjacent to it is a covered patio. So our initial proposal would have brought our lot coverage to 40.7 percent. The allowable lot coverage is 30 percent. And in hearing the concerns of the board and in an effort to reduce the requested variance, we're proposing to remove the covered patio at the back of the property to help offset the variance that we're requesting. So the square footage of the covered patio is 205 square feet. So the result that we're ending up with is a lot coverage. Our existing lot coverage right now is 35.1 percent. With the addition of our one-story proposed addition and the subtraction of the covered patio, we're now at 36.6 percent. So the total variance that we're applying for is a 6.6 percent lot coverage variance. And I think what's important to differentiate is, even though our variance request is 6.6 percent, the actual percentage of coverage that we're increasing is only 1.5 percent. So we do already exceed the lot coverage, but I think that's an important differentiation because it really helps define the quantity of the building that we're proposing to add on, which is 1.5 percent lot coverage difference. So I don't know if you want me to run through the rest of the proposal at this point or not?
Sure, if I could just make a quick comment, so the village code defines a building as anything with a roof over it. It doesn't have to be enclosed. So that's why the patio is considered a building, and we're reducing the building coverage, even though the concrete slab, I think, is remaining.
Correct, that's correct. So our proposed addition, again, is approximately 282 square feet. Again, Garden Street's at the bottom of the page. And the logical placement of the addition was at the back of the house. And it extends 12 feet to the back, and then 24-plus feet along the rear elevation. And the extension, because of the difference in the length of the house facing the neighboring property, is about 6 feet. So, again, from Garden Street, if you're looking dead at the property, you're not really seeing the addition. When you're driving down Garden Street heading north, you do see the 12 feet of the addition as you're approaching the property because the adjacent property is the open parking lot of the Lady Loretto church. So the other important thing to note is, in exploring alternatives for this proposed project, the main, the goal of our project was to attain more accessible first-floor living space on the property. And while we could achieve more living space by doing a second-floor addition, this house is within the Historic Review District, the local district. And we felt that the most appropriate way to address an addition on this particular property was to continue the vernacular that currently exists and continue with a single one-story extension of the one-story brick ranch. So we did have our Historic Review Board public hearing last week, and we received a certificate of appropriateness. And in addition, Aaron received a memo from the Historic Review Board, which will help clarify some of their passion, I guess, for this particular structure and similar structures to it in the historic district. And I guess, and the last thing is I'll just say, what we've tried to do, and even though we are requesting this variance, is to really try and be sensitive to neighboring property owners, to the effect on the neighborhood, and keeping the addition to a minimum while achieving the goals we're hoping to achieve by obtaining additional accessible space. And in doing so, we feel, again, that a one-story addition is appropriate to keep the massing appropriate, to cut down on views versus, on blocking views of neighbors and impact to light and air directly affecting neighbors as well. We've also positioned the addition on windows to really face the back of the property, so, again, the impact on immediate neighbors is minimized. So the, just, the last time we met, we didn't have this drawing, but the detached garage at the back of the property has, again, a covered patio at the side with a covered roof. And that is the section that we're proposing to remove, as sort of a bit of a trade-off to mitigate the extent of the variance we're requesting. We have elevations and pictures of the property, if you'd like to view those.
Does anybody have any questions for Karen, and then we'll move to Donald from the Historic Review Board? Karen, you said the windows were facing the back, that's not, is that a change from the last meeting, or is that already?
That is the same.
Okay.
So there is a window, I should say, I'm sorry, there is a window facing the south, the church parking lot. But the remaining windows and door are facing the west, so the Fair Street. And there are no windows facing the north, which is on the addition.
Kathleen, would you like to discuss the memo, or should I just read it?
You can read it into the record, because it represents the collaboration of our board members.
Okay, it's long, so I was hoping you'd do it, but I'll do it.
I mean, I don't mind doing it, but we got the camera on you.
I'm happy to do it. So this is a memo from the Historic District Review Board, which was sent to all members of the zoning board, and it's in the public record, and I will go ahead and read it. "On 11/13/19, the HDRB held a public hearing on the proposed addition to 41 Garden Street. Members of the public did attend to observe, but none gave comment on the project in favor or against. At the time of our hearing, the applicant had made a revision to the original application based on feedback from the ZBA regarding lot coverage. As a compromise that would reduce existing lot coverage and potentially give flexibility for new lot coverage created by the addition, the applicant proposed to demolish the roof overhang attached to the north facade of the existing garage, which appears to be a later modification. From an historic preservation standpoint, the HDRB finds this to be an acceptable compromise that will help maintain the character of the site and structures at 41 Garden. We approved the design proposal unanimously. While the structures at 41 Garden are outside the period of significance for the larger historic district, they are themselves more than 50 years old. The baseline age at which the New York State Historic Preservation Office and the Secretary of the Interior consider properties for landmarking, among other criteria. For this and the specific reasons detailed below, the HDRB takes the position that 41 Garden Street is an important property worth preserving to the greatest degree possible. 41 Garden Street was built in 1963 by the parents of the current owner, Mrs. DeMayo, who was raised in it. In fact, it was built by her father's own hand, it has remained in her family through the years. She and her husband returned from outside the village to live in it after their retirement. This small brick home is one of a number of owner-built mid-century houses around the village and reflects in tangible form the story of Cold Spring in the post-war era. It is a history common to communities all across the nation. Infill houses popped up in older neighborhoods in response to accelerating demands for single-family housing created by the crowding of the Depression and new family formations and higher birth rates after World War II. There are two 1950s houses on the opposite side of Garden, as well as a number of 1950s and 1960s houses along Fair Street, across from our Lady of Loretto, all a stone's throw from 41 Garden. Given this concentration, one might characterize this portion of the historic district as a soft area for development in the post-war era, a neighborhood where families' housing needs could be met alongside the village's historic housing stock. Although it is not unique in style, number 41 Garden is special because it is intact right down to its, right down to retaining its custom-made novelty shutters. It is a highly preserved example of owner-constructed housing, and it helps tell Cold Spring's story of the 20th century economic development and architectural style progression. It is an outstanding reflection of Cold Spring as a living, evolving, working community. The HDRB maintains that the village's more recent residential architectural history, housing for battery plant workers and other laborers, is as important to respect and preserve as that of our earliest foundry worker housing. We've been thinking about this a lot lately as part of our design standards update. I've attached a draft of that document section related to buildings that were built outside the period of significance. This should give context and foundation to the ideas we present here in support of the application for 41 Garden. Returning to specific design considerations for number 41, we ask the ZBA to consider that the structure's low-slung form, simple horizontal lines, and hipped roof are its character-defining features. The addition proposed by the designer and approved unanimously by the HDRB on 11/13/19 respects those character-defining features and seamlessly extends the structure's design vocabulary. A second-story addition would destroy the character and design intent of the structure. Therefore, the HDRB urges the zoning board of appeals to accept the compromised solution put forward by the applicant and approve the lot coverage variances necessary to allow a single-story addition to 41 Garden Street. Okay, so I think the important points, just to distill it for the ZBA, are that the design proposal has been approved by the HDRB. The HDRB maintains that the village's more recent residential architectural history is important to respect and preserve. And that the approval of, or that a one-story addition would preserve that, whereas a alternative may not.
Aaron, just for clarity, our approval was conditional on this review tonight.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Kathleen, or any discussion on board about that?
I think we flushed it out pretty well.
Good, does that, that covers your questions from the last meeting?
Yeah, yeah, very appreciated.
So why don't we open this up to the public again, since we're having a second meeting? If anybody from the public would like to speak again, now that the plans have changed.
Yeah, hi.
So if you would just come up and state your name, and perhaps stand next to Karen where the camera can get you, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Yeah, hi, I'm Michael Mueller, I live at 43 Garden Street, next-door neighbor. Actually, I've written some things out. So I, I don't know, my wife Maureen and I, I guess we just wanted to express ourselves for the record that, you know, we completely understand why you guys want to, you know, you know, put on an addition, and your needs and all that. But in all honesty, we have to say that we're uncomfortable with any changes to the property. And I don't know, I just feel like we had to say that, even though, you know, you probably will go ahead and, you know, with the addition, and that's what we'll have to live with, I just felt like we had to say that for the record. And, you know, nothing personal against you at all, you know, I get it, I understand your needs. So, you know, just concerned about, you know, exactly what we talked about in the last meeting, about density and the character of the village, and that, you know, property already exceeds, you know, the percentage. But, as I said last time also, what would be, you know, the proposed addition would be preferable to the idea that was floated last time about possibly adding a second floor instead of building out on the ground floor. So definitely, we feel that a second floor would be the worst option. I mean, not just for personal reasons, but for the village, you know, for the village, for the neighborhood. And again, in terms of aesthetics, density, you know, for the neighborhood. Also, a lot, I feel, was made up of the character of the 60s-style ranch house. I mean, would that be typical for a 60s ranch house to have a second floor? I mean, that seems a little unusual, too. So... Then Maureen, I missed this last time, she thought that somebody said that, let's see. She said that the additional, the addition wouldn't be really very visible to us. When in fact, you know, in our backyard, it would be extremely visible. Especially in light of, you know, the recent, you know, pruning of trees and shrubs that were done. And I know you said you wanted to plant some new things, which is great, totally welcome. Any kind of natural screening would be really, really good. But I think that would take quite some time to grow in, to really provide a proper screen. So there was that. And then I guess, just, you know, in closing, just also worried, you know, concerned about the village in general, about setting precedents in terms of, you know, things that are built and density and so on. Again, although it's said, and you talk about property values as speculative, again, thinking about property values in the village and the neighborhood, too, if things are built up too much, and, you know. And I guess that's it. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Sure, Paul? My name is Paul Henderson, and I live at 14 Stone Street, so I live in the village. And I was at the HDRB presentation and was very taken with what was being proposed. One of the things that I wanted to comment on was, apart from the program of a one-story house and not having the addition increase the bulk for the village and blocking views, et cetera, was that the program also much better incorporates the need for accessibility. And the idea that we can have a mix in the village of both older and younger people, young people with young families, and have that intermixture is extremely important to keeping a vital village. So apart from the architectural interests I have as an architectural firm, I'm also taken with that, so I appreciate that. And I would vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I respond to some of the comments? So I'm sorry, Michael didn't stay to react, but I do want to say I appreciate everyone's comments for or against, and I understand that any change within the village has an impact on people, particularly direct neighbors. So, but I will say that change in and of itself does not necessarily represent a negative impact. And that's a very personal thing, and sometimes any change is a negative impact to some individuals. And I do just want to point out that we, you know, spent a fair amount of time looking at our proposal and trying to minimize it while also creating a plan that was going to be of the size that was actually going to help us to accommodate the needs we're hoping to accommodate with this addition. And we really do feel that the one-story modest addition is the best approach. I think most everyone is in agreement that a second-story addition to this house, besides the design aesthetic of it, just the impact of it would be much greater. And the view of a small residential addition isn't necessarily a negative one, it can be very positive. And while it is additional volume on the property, I think the actual style is so consistent with what's currently there that really we're minimizing that to the greatest extent possible and feel that it is a continuation of the architectural style and will be very much in keeping with the character of the neighborhood as it currently exists.
I have just a quick question, what's the, since I wasn't here last time, the square footage, the difference between what was first proposed as a second floor, how many square feet was that compared to this now proposed 282?
So we actually never proposed a second floor, that was something that was
Oh, I see.
mentioned as a potential alternative by Donald McDonald on the board. And it is something that, you know, we talked about initially, but we pretty much very quickly dismissed that as an option for all of the reasons we've discussed, both with your board and the Historic Review Board. So both from an architectural standpoint, from what we wanted to achieve within the house, and also, in fairness, I know your boards really can't consider the cost, but that was a consideration as well. We felt like a second-story addition would have been a much more significant change to the structure and been much more consistent.
I raised the issue only because one of the five standards that we have to consider when we grant variances or deny them is the, is there a way for, it's feasible for the applicant to achieve their goals without exceeding the code. And feasible is a, the definition of feasible, you could drive a Mack truck through it. It is pretty clear that it would be much more difficult to put a second story on the building. I'm trying to build into the record why we are going to a one-story, so when and if we do grant the variance, we can point to covering our tracks.
Any other questions or comments from the board before we close the hearing, and then we can move on to our own discussion?
Do you have any questions?
Okay. Can I motion to close the public hearing, please?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second, I'll in favor.
Hi.
All right. Okay, so I guess one, one thing that we also need to make clear is that we have really no power to stop the current owner or a future owner from putting a second story on the house. Unless we were to do something like a deed restriction, which is possible, I suppose, but we have not done that recently, at least not as far as I know of. So that's just a simple, a simple fact, no variance would be needed to add the second story. So if we grant this as a trade, if we grant this as the more favorable option of the two, then we're not guaranteeing that somebody in the future will not try to put a second story on there. That's just not something that we can, we can prevent unless we want to put a deed restriction on. And we went, we talked about how those work recently when we were looking at 21 Parsons Street.
So that being said, that's the purpose, trying to keep footprints within certain size as far as lot coverage. Because the idea is that the property can always, if it's only a single-story house, be built up. Because it'll increase density in its mass and in its appearance and in its blocking of light and air. I think that was expressed by the neighbor. But those are thoughts, those are considerations we have to think about.
Could I just add something to that briefly? And I understand what you're saying, I do want to just point out that a second, a potential second story down the road by somebody, which might occur, could, as a right, occur over a portion of the house. But there is a good amount of square footage that is actually within the setbacks. So just to be clear, like a full second story of the entire house wouldn't be feasible without future variance.
wouldn't be feasible without future variances from this board.
Right.
Wouldn't it also go in front of the Historic Review Board?
It would, yes.
And given that letter, it seems like the Historic Review Board isn't going in the direction of a second story.
But I don't think that they would be able to prevent it. Am I right about that? You would just be able to direct the, the design of this future second story?
Absolutely deconde, such a big of appropriateness for a second story, yes.
Okay.
If it's, if it were to destroy the character defining features of the house, which it would, it would have to be a justifiable denial.
So, so that, that does put in a backstop against a second, second story. But again, out of, you know, it's out of our control. So, I mean, that's also an interesting, an interesting point when we consider the neighbor's point of view. They would prefer not to have a change. And I think it would be very difficult now for them to get a second story, it sounds like.
Well, just to understand that any decision by any adjudicating board, like yours or ours, is, can be appealed. So if, in some hypothetical scenario, someone were to put forward an addition, a second-story addition, and hypothetically that second-story addition were to be denied, the applicant could then appeal on the basis of hardship. So, you know, it's a, a denial wouldn't necessarily be the end of the store in this property. But I think there, given what we have documented about the character of the building, there's a good solid ground to stand on for why to support a denial of a, a second story.
Thank you.
Well, the fact that all this information has gone into the record, it would historically follow this property down the road, I imagine.
No one has proposed a second-story addition. No one wants one, so I don't know, understand why we're talking about it.
Well, the current owner doesn't want one, the current neighbor doesn't want one. But we, we can't, our board can't stop it from happening. We can't make a hard stop to it. A potential second floor might have to come back to zoning, depending on how much of the building it covers. But we don't know what the future, what future owners will do.
It's just a consideration.
But there are a hundred changes they could make. Somebody could make in the future to any house. I don't see what it has to do with this application.
Well, I think that we were talking about it because
Mass.
The building, the, the lot coverage already is five percent over what the code says, which is fine. And now with this revised one, they're only going up a percentage and a half. But, and because they're making a major sacrifice in removing their covered porch. But it is still an increase. And so you have, on the one hand, you have a board allowing a relatively small variance, it seems like now. But again, maxing out ground floor area where in the future somebody could, could take advantage of that in the sense of adding more second-story space, which would not be the variance. So it's a little bit of paving the way for even, even higher density down in the future. And there's nothing we can do about it. It's just remarking on the situation more than it is. I think, especially now with only going up one and a half percent, I don't know, it weighs very heavily, if at all, on the deliberations for this particular variance tonight. But it sure would have if we were staying with the original, which was, how many percent over?
Ten point seven total over the thirty percent.
Ten point, another five.
Another five point six percent.
Five or so percent more. We would have been in the forty, over forty percent.
Forty point seven.
Right, which gets into, you know, that's like red zone territory. So, so it's worth discussing, I think, noting. My, my opinion. I think the, what, you know, I think, I look at this and I think the application now, the proposal now, it, it has respect for the architectural, post-war architectural type of dwelling this is. It respects accessibility and, as Paul says, allowing older people to stay in the village and not have to necessarily go to home or something like that. It keeps elderly people or older people in, in neighborhoods. And it respects the village code because the applicant is making a major sacrifice in taking off their covered porch, which covers a lot. I, from the photo, I can see, keeps dry a lot of things that you probably can't fit in your garage anymore. So, like my house. So I get it.
Yeah.
So it seems to me that everybody is, has, the applicant has made, made, taken a good, a good application with a series, one series issue and made it acceptable.
Karen, how many, how many square feet over the current lot coverage is the, the new proposal?
One point five percent.
And how many square feet is that?
I'll have to pull out my calculator. I think it's seventy, I think the difference is seventy-seven square feet, right? Because our proposed addition is 282 and the porch that we're removing is 205. So the difference is seventy-seven square feet over the lot coverage, which equates to a 1.5% increase from what exists. So over, I guess, in, over the lot coverage is that seventy-seven plus the 282.
Over the existing lot coverage, okay.
It's only seventy-seven over the current lot coverage.
Is that seventy-seven square feet necessary to achieve the plans of the accessible bathroom?
We do feel it is. I mean, it's the accessible bathroom and additional accessible first-floor space. And we do feel that in the design that, you know, we've, we've tried to minimize our requests based on what we feel is needed to achieve the goals. I mean, I think it can be said that anything can always be scaled back, but at some point, you know, I don't think it's anyone's first choice to come and ask for a variance. I think it's weighing, weighing the pros and cons and whether or not it seems worth it to us. And based on the goals of what we hope to achieve in the house and the spatial things, we felt it was worth it to try and appeal to your board for a variance.
Is the back of your residential structure further west? I mean, deeper into the lot, the structure itself than the neighboring structure to the north? Such that, from their house?
You can kind of see their house on the site plan.
Right, so it would appear, my suggestion, my idea is whether or not they could really see that much of the new addition if it's just one floor, if this is as far back as their house goes.
Right, I mean, I think what Michael had mentioned when he was here is they can see it when they're in their backyard using the property. But from their house, they'll, if they're on the second floor of their house, they can look down in the roof structure. But I would say from inside the house, you might catch a smidgen in the corner of the back of it.
Yeah, their house sits further east.
Right.
It's, it's further east.
They're, they're, the back of their house is further east than mine.
Right. It pretty much follows this line directly back on the second floor.
So if they're standing in their own house, looking out their southerly windows at your house, but within their house, they wouldn't necessarily really see that much of the new addition. It just wouldn't be that apparent.
Their last window is right about here, something around here.
Right.
You can't really, the last window is here.
Does the board think?
To give, to give scale to what Erin is getting to, seventy-seven square feet. And I, I've learned this with bitter experience and you have, too.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't sound like a lot, but on a small addition, seventy-seven square feet is a lot.
Right.
And so I just, I'm just estimating the length from here to here is twenty-some odd feet.
It would be taking basically three feet off of that wall.
So it's not like taking six inches off the back. It's taking, you know, three feet. And we don't have the floor plan of it now, but I remember enough of it to know that three feet off that floor plan is going to be a major problem.
Here's the floor plan.
Yeah, so, well... Can I draw this? I can't draw it.
You can, sure.
I'm drawing it out, you know, so.
And I will say, too, because these are brick, this is brick wall construction.
That's how much they're taking off, give or take.
So there's no bath anywhere?
It gets, the whole thing gets a little problematic.
Also, our wall's.
It's, you know, it's a, it get, we can get into a game of, you know, how big a kitchen somebody could have and how much for the island and this and the other. And again, it's, it's a, it's a wide target. But I can see why that could be, that would be, that seventy-seven square feet matters in that, slightly, in that, in that plan. As a percentage, it's what, it's about twenty-five percent of your, twenty percent of your total addition?
Yeah, it's about twenty-five percent.
Yeah, okay, twenty-five percent. So that's not, it's not a rounding error, it's, it would be substantial.
Is that a second, second bathroom right behind the proposed bathroom?
Yeah, so the existing bathroom, that's the existing single bathroom in the house, which is teeny tiny. And so that bathroom is being proposed to stay. And then the second bathroom that we're proposing would be the accessible.
I see, and that one's directly connected to the bedroom?
Correct.
For the fact that the house is up against the parking lot, which sort of has less of a density effect to, to the addition on. I mean, I'm just trying to think of elements to differentiate, allowing, you know, the expansion in this case as opposed to other situations that may come before us or have come before us. Is that parking lot like a full, like, lot itself, just a separate lot, the parking lot for the church? Or is that, is a combination of several lots?
I think it's part of the, to look at the, the tax map to see. But I think it's part of one big lot and it's just the church.
Yeah, they, from looking at this, it may be just one large lot there on the east side of the road.
So the property is twenty-seven. Actually, it looks like it is a separate lot. Twenty-six is the parking lot, and it's also number four and two. So two, well, it's actually five, four, twenty-six is the church.
So the one just to the, the lot that's part of the parking lot is just about the same size?
Correct.
That being the lot that's south?
Right, it looks like it's another fifty by hundred lot. Fifty by hundred, four.
So that could be developed one day, too, and be outlined that we're sold.
Any further discussion? Or we can move on to, to our evaluation criteria and keep going forward? Okay. Laura, do you want to skip, skip this one?
I, I said I rejected this one.
Okay, great. I mean, fine. Okay, so let's, let's jump in. So at this point of our meeting, for those who haven't seen this before, we go through five criteria that the state tells us to use when we evaluate whether to grant a variance or not. And on this board, we usually go through with, to hear each person's opinion so we can collect any difference of opinion. And then this gets balanced into a balancing statement, and then we take a vote. Or we make a motion. Somebody will make a motion to approve or deny, and then we'll take a vote. So the first one, the benefits sought by the applicant can or cannot be achieved by any other feasible means. So I'm going to jump in and say yes, but not without, not without a sacrifice to, to the proposed design. And I, I think that we can say that it probably could be achieved by other means, not including the second story. And if we were to limit the, the size of the variance to the existing lot coverage, I think that probably a slightly smaller addition would probably still accomplish, accomplish the need. John?
Well, I'm thinking it can't be achieved by any other means. For the reason that the Historic Review Board views the structure to be something of value in the community and to preserve it at its one-story level height. And the expansion area appears to be, you know, needed as far as the amenities that are indicated, that are going to be added within that new addition. Donald having discussed that trying to narrow it by, you know, certain amount of additional square footage would make the planned project not really feasible. So I just, I think they're under a little bit of a constricted situation here as to what they may really do with the property, is what the HRB would like to see done with it. And they're making a concession with regards to take, removing the roof in the back in order to make it less of a, an increase in the overall square footage that currently exists. It will only, from how it currently exists as grandfather, it would only be 1.5%.
Okay. Donald?
We're doing, oh, so feasibility, well, we, we, okay.
Whether or not it can be achieved by any other means.
Right, so we know it could be achieved by having a second story, but we've, we've run that down in the sense that, run that issue down in the sense that Historic Review Board points out very eloquently. in the sense that Historic Review Board points out very eloquently, the, the, um, the need to maintain this architectural type, this post-war architectural type in the village. And the proposal does that and adds on to it in a very empathetic, um, way. And I think day one, you were talking about, um, well, getting to the accessibility issue. You were talking about having everything on one story and the fact that you want, you, you want, you were looking ahead to what the issues would be in terms of, um, aging in the village. And, um, one thing, there are two issues there. One would be keeping everything on the same level and the other is that, um, as we get older, we need more space to, for our walker, God forbid, or our wheelchair, whatever, we need those. And, and this plan, I could make that plan smaller for me, but I couldn't make it smaller for me if I was in a wheelchair. So, um, and that's something we better consider. So, um, I'm not wishing that on you.
No, I, I know.
And, um, so there, so there are feasible alternatives and that's why we've actually kept the hearing open to, to, um, to thoroughly look at those issues. And I come down on that, um, that the issues have been satisfied as far as I'm concerned. Why it is, it is, is unbalanced, I would be for granting the variance rather than, than insisting on, um, more feasible for the code, less feasible for the applicant solutions.
Thanks.
Uh, well, I, in my understanding, the answer to this criterion would be no because the two alternatives that have been proposed are either fail to provide the benefit that's sought for or they're not feasible, um, or it's not, it's not feasible because it presents such severe disadvantages.
Okay. The proposed variance will or will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and a detriment to nearby properties will or will not be created by the granting of the area variance. John?
I don't think it'll create a detriment. They're trying to stay consistent to the ranch style. It's had approvals by the H R B as it, as its appearance. It won't be blocking light with a second floor at this point or airflow. And, uh, there's, there's an open parking lot next to it. And there's also, again, um, the applicant has sought to make a concession by removing its back porch, which, again, decreases the requested variance from what was originally six percent down to one point five. And that would be six percent from what was grandfathered at that point in time in the size of the structure, which was thirty-five percent coverage. And it really increased to forty-one, so I don't think it's gonna create a detriment.
Donald?
Well, importantly, the neighbor stated that they, they do feel that it'll, it'll be a detriment to their neighborhood. But they didn't, they, but I, I look at this and I don't, uh, the, the way the, the addition is placed, uh, the way it is placed in relation to the neighbor's house, um, I can see why it would, um, it's gonna be a change, but as changes go in backyards, this is for, in terms of the neighbor, it's, I don't think it's a big, I don't think it's a big change. So I, um, I ultimately feel like, um, the the benefit to the applicant outweighs the minimal detriment to the neighborhood.
Okay, Eric?
I think that the applicant, or the proposal will bring an undesirable change and a detriment in areas like, um, reduced airflow, um, reduction of the clear views between properties. But these, uh, the change will be, um, not, it'll be insignificant. And the applicants have done a good job to minimize them.
I, I think that it will be a detriment to the neighboring property as we heard from the neighbor. And I think when the neighbor tells us that the change to their enjoyment of the backyard is important, that we, we have to listen to that and, and believe it. And the, the only, um, I think we're making a mistake if we only consider the relationship of the two buildings to each other and not the full property of the neighbors, which is a large double lot. I do not think it will produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood for reasons that have been stated about the ranch, the maintaining the ranch style. And I think the density is similar to other, other parts of Garden Street.
I don't believe that, um, the, because I'd be the first to be yelling if I felt like, you know, somebody was putting something smack in a backyard that really affected the neigh, my neighbor's, the neighbor's backyard. And I just don't see that here, which is why I didn't really get into it. I know he's, the neighbor said that, well, we'll be able to see it in our backyard, but I, I don't, when I look at this plan, I don't see why that particular addition will really impact his enjoyment of his backyard. And it's balanced off by the fact that he's not gonna be looking at the roof, the colored, the covered roof, which is much more on your face from the backyard on the, uh, the garage. That won't be there anymore, so, um, I call that one a wash.
It'll be more like coming through with that roof on the garage.
A little bit, yeah. Um, the requested variance, uh, the variance requested is or is not substantial. Donald?
Um, the required, the variance requested, um, one point five percent is not substantial. It's not a substantial number when compared to thirty percent. And as the applicant has pointed out, they're starting at a base of five percent over the allowable. So, you know, they're, um, they start at thirty-five percent, so I don't, I don't think one, one point five percent is, um, is substantial.
Okay, Eric?
I agree, it's not substantial.
I agree with that also. John?
I say it's not substantial and, and for the fact that by not going up at this, you know, point, they're not taking away additional light and airflow. So I just don't think it's, you know, at the one point five percent increase, the property was already lucky enough to have a grandfathered additional thirty-five percent rather than the thirty percent. But the type of change they tried to affect without going up is only one point five percent. And this way they don't end up, you know, changing the character of the building and more greatly affecting the airflow and the light, which the next door neighbor referenced to.
And before you move on to the next one, or will you gonna talk about that?
Um, I guess not.
I just had a clarification.
Okay.
First of all, thank you and I agree with all of you. I don't think it's a significant, um, request. I, I do just wanna clarify that the variance we're requesting, even though our current building is a pre-existing non-conforming, is it correct that our variance has to cover that non-conformity? So the variance being requested is actually six point six percent, even though the increase is only one point five.
I think that's, that's the right way to do it because you're extending an existing non-conformity. So we wanna bring it all up. We can't say that it's part of the same measurement.
But more reference to the fact that it was pre-existing non-conforming.
Thank you.
Um, excuse me, I came to workshop for ceramics, but I have to go Boy Scouts to pick up my son, so I will reschedule this.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that.
Okay, thank you for coming, sorry we couldn't get to you. Um, okay, the proposed variance will or will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Eric?
No, I don't see any, um, any adverse effect in that area.
Okay, I am going to agree with that. John?
I don't see any adverse effect, uh, to the extent that I imagine there will be additional gutter, gutters put on the new addition because you're removing, um, a certain portion of the land from absorbing water.
Correct, and, and there is additional roof, obviously. And actually, the linear feet of gutter is only increased by about six feet because of the L that we're collecting, and so, yes.
So there'll be, the, the water runoff for that area will be controlled?
Yes, it will be, it'll utilize the existing system. I believe the gutters go into an underground dry well, is that correct?
Yeah, because even though you're removing the roof off of a portion of the garage, you still have a cement
Correct.
base there, so that's less permeable for absorbing water. But, uh, I, I, other than that, I don't see difficulties.
Donald?
No, I have nothing to add, I agree with what you've said.
Okay. Um, the alleged difficulty necessitating the variance was or was not self-created. Will it be back to me? Um, yes, it is self-created. And while this is almost always the case, I wanna raise the point here that, um, the need for an accessi, for an accessible house and accessible facilities in a house is still, um, a self-created, self-created need. We can't use that, we don't wanna set a precedent that anyone can, can, um, say they need an accessible, uh, they need a variance for accessibility because there'll be no, there'll be no end to the variances we have to give if we do that. Not that it's not a worthy thing, but, um, it's not something that we can enforce, so I don't think that we really need to, um, I don't think that, that makes it, um, uh, an external need. Um, John?
Well, it's self-created. A larger house could be bought, but, uh, this is the residence that the current owner's parents built, where they occupied the residence for much of their life. And I just believe that just it's self-created, but minimal, uh, in impact.
Donald?
I don't know, anything to add to what John said?
Eric?
I agree, it is self-created.
Okay, um, so we're on to our balancing statement. I guess one, one thing that I wanna raise is that we very rarely have neighbors speaking, um, not str, I mean, this neighbor did not speak strongly against the project, but, um, we very rarely have, have an immediate neighbor, um, speaking against, um, a variance. And I, I think that's, that's important and I think we should, um, should, should make sure that that factor's going to, to our balancing statement.
And I think we should also consider, it's difficult for neighbors to sometimes express negative, uh, views of a project, just for maintaining, uh, friendliness of neighbor, in neighborhoods and, uh, but it's important that they do come out and make a statement. It makes our job easier to finding out what are the appropriate parameters using the code provisions.
So I think in balance, um, the majority of the board feels that, uh, the proposed addition cannot be achieved by any other means. Um, I, I disagreed with that somewhat, um, that it could be achieved by other means with a, a change to the design to make the addition smaller. And for the reasons that we have stated, stated above. Additionally, um, we were, we were mixed on whether it will be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. I think we all agreed it would not change the neighborhood, although, um, uh, John, uh, was it John that John mentioned that? Um, Donald and I mentioned that it was a detriment to the neighbor. Donald thought that was a, a minimal detriment. And I am not sure, but I am, I am going to take the neighbor's word for it, that it's perhaps more than minimal. Um, finally, we, um, we agreed that it is not substantial and, um, this is primarily due to the change in the, uh, from the original plan with, with the removal of the roof over the patio next to the garage. It will not have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions. We're all in agreement there, that it will not. And finally, we agree that it is self-created. And, but by granting the variance, if we did, we would be helping to keep the house in the family and the, um, the diff, the variance required is minimal, John said. So our next step is for somebody to make a motion to, I think somebody will make a motion to approve this. I would, um, I guess my personal preference is that we would go with a, um, the minimum amount of variance necessary to not increase the lot coverage and that is smaller than what's requested. And the reason that I would suggest that is because I think this is re, leaning really closely to the accessibility, uh, the need for an accessible, um, uh, living area dictating the size of the addition. And I'm not sure that, uh, that it is, I'm not capable of evaluating that myself. Donald is telling us that it's, it's not possible. But, um, that, that's my personal preference and I will just leave it there.
Well, uh, how, how about if we just eliminate accessibility as a factor for our consideration? I agree, it should not be a factor. When we, some, when we address the criteria. So, um, therefore, um, when we consider whether it's feasible to reduce the size of the addition, we should consider that question without any, um, without touching on accessibility. We just consider whether it is, um, i, in general, an addition like this, um, accomplishes its purpose if it's reduced by seventy-seven square feet. Can that, will that address what you're worried about?
Um, we have a lot of, uh, a lot of our discussion in evaluating the criteria involved accessibility. And I, that's, um, so you're suggesting that we look at that again and eliminate the, the park- so you're suggesting that we look at that again and eliminate the accessible commentary?
If we can solve, if we can answer criterion one by just saying, does it make sense to build an addition that would be X size, which would be the size it would have to be without increasing non-conformance? Doesn't make sense without any consideration of accessibility, it just doesn't make sense to make an addition of such small extent. And if the answer is no, then we're fine with the.
I see what you're saying. So, if it's, if it seems, if such a small addition, seventy-seven square feet smaller, were so small as to not be valuable, then the larger addition would be needed.
Right.
Again, I guess, you know, we would have to know why. Is it for a larger TV or a larger couch?
Well, we've never get into that, you know, we really can't. Because we just can't, like you said, we can't evaluate people's personal needs and try to judge them, like that's not worthy, this is worthy, we just can't get into that. So, we just have to, in general terms, doesn't make sense economic, in terms of just the average economics of architecture, does it make sense to build such a small addition? When you consider the, how expensive it is just to get a project like that going and get it done. And I think there's a good argument it wouldn't be, like.
I think that in some ways, that's a, that's a more dangerous.
I don't buy that at all.
Expression, that's a more dangerous way to look at it because then people would say, well, I wanted to build a five-hundred-square-foot addition, but the price per square foot goes way down if I build a thousand-square-foot addition.
I think in the end, we're just looking at the density.
Well, we did it, I'm sorry, can I just finish?
Yeah, sure.
But we did just that line of thinking, though, with regard to the deck that was at last, the last meeting. The proposal was for a deck that extended just a little bit, one corner of the deck extended into the setback area. And we argued that, yes, the deck could be scaled back, but then it would just be so small, it's hardly even a usable deck. Just isn't a deck, really. So, you know, that's using like just general architectural, good common sense about the nature of an addition for anyone, not for somebody's specific needs, but just, and that's what I'm proposing, just we would say about this addition.
You were saying more, you were saying that, that if we, if you said build less square feet, it would be reasonable to say, well, if we build less square feet, we have to pay more for that square footage, it's unfeasible.
No, no, I didn't mean that literally like that precisely.
That was how I carried the argument forward, but I think what Eric meant to say, or what Eric said is that if they tell us they need this size addition to do what they wanna do, then that, and a smaller addition doesn't do that, then that's the same as not considering, not perhaps setting a precedent for accessibility.
The way I look at those issues is I think of the extreme. So, say I came into ZBA and I said, I wanna build a hundred-bedroom house because I really need it, because my best friend is, you know, I run in circles where I need that kind of bedroom, they're all my guests, right? And the ZBA would say, well, and I need a raft of variances for that, you know? We would say, go buy another forty acres in Phillips Town somewhere and build it. So, I think, you know, we do make some judgment about rough size in relation to what, you know, what you can achieve in a small lot village and what lifestyles are like in this village. I think we made some kind of, you know, determination about that. This one, you know, it's probably right on the edge. Could you consolidate it? You probably could consolidate it. I said that I thought that taking three feet off this would be a substantial issue design-wise. I'm not saying that it couldn't be done. I don't know, and I'm sure Karen probably would say the same thing. You'd have to sit there for a day or so, you know, and work it out. I think there's, I'm just speculating, and I think that it would be a tough, a tough thing to do. I don't know that, you know, that it couldn't be done, I wouldn't say that.
Okay.
I think when I look at it overall, I just don't see, if the addition, if the addition was, you know, if the addition was coming out this way, you know, in the backyard, you know, right in the neighbor's face, you know, we'd be, the same square footage, I'd be having a different take on the whole thing. But I think it's consolidated to the house, it's, you know, it's, 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 seems reasonable. And I think we're getting into one and a half percent.
But the appropriate concerns here, and the reason why it's causing so much discussion, far more discussion than most of the other variances we look at, is that there is a concern about just overbuilding, you know, on lots. And it does affect neighbors, and neighbors do have comments in that regard, as we saw tonight. So, we're looking at this, because how do we then distinguish this project from the next? And can we start rewriting? I mean, every project is to be looked at independently, but are we gonna basically rewrite the code to keep giving, you know, additional and more, you know, exceptions to increase size over thirty percent? If we can distinguish this property from others and other applications, then we're fine. That's, that then, you know, the improvement in its overage wouldn't be considerable if it can be distinguished from what another property owner might wanna do. And that's what we're looking at here, I think, because, you know, as it comes down in the future, we have, go ahead.
I think the counterexample to your hundred-bedroom house, Donald, is that maybe not everybody is gonna, can reasonably claim that. In fact, maybe nobody can, I know it's an extreme example, but everybody could potentially say, I wanna build my, make my lot larger now to prepare for my, my future needs for accessibility. And this is, it's a small lot. Remember the small shed we added on Railroad Avenue down in the back corner? One of the things we considered, I think that went over the lot coverage a little bit, didn't it? And one of the things we considered is that it was tucked in the back corner where nobody could see it.
That's right. So, again, that sort of distinguished, where there was a factor that made it, you know, more feasible than, you know, just sort of as Donald had just pointed out, where if the same addition size as proposed ran along the northerly boundary line in the neighbor's face, then that would be probably more of an issue. I mean, it's just like, like you said, tucking the shed into a different location. And it wasn't a substantial area overage to the thirty percent.
One way to distinguish this is, in my mind, what we're talking about is one-story brick post-war houses in the village of Cold Spring. So, right there, that's a gatekeeper for what we're doing here.
That's true.
If this was a typical wood-framed house in the village, I would be back where I was at the last session saying, take some bedrooms, throw them upstairs, and make your first floor free it up for what you wanna do.
And this way, you don't go over the footprint.
And then you wouldn't go over the footprint. But here, we have, we have.
A ranch.
A ranch, and not just any ranch, but a ranch that is a, and it is. It's like one of probably five in the village, which are clear, perfect examples of that post-war ranch style that they are. And they're pristine in that regard. And we've asked, we've rolled the hearing into the next, you know, to have ZBA, I mean, HDRB chime in and give us a very well-thought-out statement on that. And, you know, I think that's the gatekeeper right here. This is, this decision is limited to this type, this type ranch.
At least in this application, it's particularized. I mean, there isn't, there is a way of stating it that can accept out other potential properties, looking at it the same way. The other property owners that they wanna expand would just go up. Of course, then the neighbors, if they had air and light issues, may come in and raise similar concerns, but then we would have to balance that out, figure out, is it better to go up? Or is it, are we trying to conserve or protect a certain form of structure? Which, again, in this case, is the ranch style, one-story. Anyway, I'm not gonna keep dragging this out on this.
I think we're all leaning toward approving the application, perhaps, I'm just guessing that. And the only issue then is Aaron's concern about if we appear to be resting our decision partly on the question of accessibility. So, I suggest we eliminate that explicitly, that we, I mean, make that no part of our balancing statement because it doesn't need to be. We can simply state the idea of eliminating three feet off the width of the addition, results in such a reduction that it's no longer a feasible, it's no longer a practical project for any ordinary purpose.
And in addition.
It has nothing to do with accessibility, then. It doesn't need to be, I mean, it doesn't, there's no need to take accessibility into account.
Especially since the applicant doesn't need, you know, accessibility criteria. It's not an issue for them at the moment. So, I mean, I'm just saying, in general, yes, don't get in on that issue at all.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion?
I move to, I move based on the balancing statement here to approve the applicant's request for a variance as indicated by the filed documents. And in taking into consideration the HDRB statement that we do have a one-story ranch house here that they're trying to continue as its purpose, but expanding the footprint a little bit, which is just marginally one percent, point five over, it'll be a six percent variance, but it's really one point five percent over the current grandfather lot coverage. And so, I move to approve it.
And could you add a condition that the patio garage is going, the patio roof next to the garage is going to be removed?
Right, that's why I said consistent with the document saying, okay, it's gonna be removed.
And is not to be rebuilt without, I mean, you would need another variance if you were gonna put that back on.
So, anybody wanna second that?
I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? All right. Variance has been granted, thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Please wait until you get a building permit to start construction.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
So, as our usual process, I will draft the resolution and send it around to everybody to make sure that I've captured all of the points. So, the next item on the agenda is the workshop for twenty-one parsonage. And at the advice of our lawyer, John, first, I'm going to leave the room. Donald, would you like me to stick around until the meeting is over, or do you wanna?
We have, is there anything else that?
I think we have all the thing tonight.
We did, but he had to leave. So, do you need, do you need me to stick around for that, or do you wanna, you close up? Or Michael will close up.
Yeah, you don't need to stick around.
Okay, great.
Before you leave, just, I wanted to offer, we have met with this applicant in workshop as well, the HDRB. And if it is useful to use, since it is a complex application, more complex than the house, if it's useful to do a workshop with the boards together, we're willing to do that. I was planning to stay tonight, but I'm gonna fall asleep if I sit here, so I'm gonna go. If you want it, but if you would like to do that as we deal with the property on Mayan Orchard, we're happy to meet in combined session workshop.
Okay.
Just to save them hanging back and forth.
Do you wanna do that?
Well, tonight we're just.
Not tonight, I'm taking.
Tonight, we're just doing a, we're just gonna go through the applicant checklist, just see whether they're ready to. I think we're too bad when we get into the public hearing portion.
Either workshop or hearing, whatever works.
I'm gonna, I keep it around for a while or so.
Your time and our time with having a bounce back before, we'd rather come together with you in an informal discussion before you, once one of our boards takes a vote, it ties, it locks them into one position.
See, the problem we have that you don't have in our board is that we, it's hard, we, it's dangerous, in fact, it's fatal for us to have informal discussions about the merits of a project outside the context of opening up the public hearing. So, I'd rather we go through the materials tonight. Paul, we're just doing a workshop tonight just for, just to know that.
Very different than what we just.
We can go to the public hearing. And then, once we get in that realm, then we can talk about how we wanna do that.
Whatever works in your process that saves your board time and our board time and their time.
Right, okay, cool, thank you.
Yep.
Are we just as good as we were?
We could, well, it's, it doesn't matter.
If you need me, I know my phone, but I don't think you will.
Good night.
Good night.
Go ahead, it's a workshop.
You can move her, I'm Paul Peterson, I've met these two before. We've met in my show, but I haven't seen you in ZBA.
Should we move our table to where Senator?
I can't make it more serious.
This table is a quite.
So, we're just, we're just, we're just opening up a workshop to, I haven't done this in a while, so I've got a number here. Well, we're not opening a public hearing, we're just doing a workshop on, what is it?
Twenty-one parsonage.
Twenty-one parsonage to, talking about an empty lot and proposing to build, not an empty lot, a lot with a barn on it and proposing a new house. So, tonight, we're just here to do a workshop to see that we have everything in shape for the application, then we can go to a public hearing. Once we get a public hearing, then we can start talking about the merits of the application and consulting with the boards or whatever. So, do you wanna, somebody wanna just, let's just go through for the record the guts of the proposal, so, you know, it wouldn't take more than, just the big picture.
Right, so what we're proposing to do, and I'll let the applicant speak after, after this too, is to repurpose the existing frame of the barn, or actually, of the stable, and keep it where it is, which is the reason that the referral we got from Jeff was for the front yard setback, side yard setback, lot size, and for parking. And just to follow up on what Kathleen was saying, the kind of tie-in with the HDRB is the necessity for those, the side yard and front yard setback. And that really has to do with the location of the building and relationship to its primary structure. So, obviously, before this lot was divided, the stable was part of the parcel that is also at Thirty-Six Pine Street, which was originally a store, the store. And what we all agree on, and part of the reason that my firm is involved is because we are interested in these accessory structures in the village of Cold Spring, and particularly ones that are older than eighteen eighty. But it's also because we think it's imperative to maintain that architectonic relationship between those two. And that is really the overlap between the ZBA's concerns about setbacks and the HDRB's concern about preservation. So, that's where the two of you kind of overlap. So, that's where the two of you kind of overlap. And maybe, maybe you wanna speak, Sam, about why you're, why we're back here now, why you're back here.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I did apply originally, this is my second time here. And through the last process, we talked a lot about, could we move the building into the center of the lot and reduce variances? And really, when I sat, when I took some time to think about it, I really, it was clear to me that the primary reason for, for me doing this project, really the only reason, is because I think that that building is so special, where it is proportionally and in proportion to the building next to it. There isn't a lot to the building. So, really, what there is to it is what's special about it. It's a very unique structure, it's very historically relevant, there's not a lot of buildings like this left in the village. And so, I really, after taking that time to think about it, enlisted the help of Siegler Henderson and have now reapplied, because I really think the only reason to do this project is to save that building's architektonics, how big it is, its proportion and scale relative to the building next to it, and its position on the lot. It just doesn't work any other way.
Right, so you filed an application with the village?
Right.
And you filed the five hundred dollar escrow?
I need to ask Jeff, I wrote a check, but there was a rebalancing of a previous escrow. So, I need to confirm with Jeff, follow up on that.
What?
We need to follow up on that.
All right. You submitted the application fee, fifty dollars?
Yes.
I imagine you have.
Yes.
We have a copy of the denied building permit, the referral, and I think I have a copy of that already. You should have asked him to-
We have a referral book, you don't have a, you're not a builder.
You've got, you've got the thing from Jeff?
Yes.
Right, right.
And it was, it was revised because originally he referred us also to the planning board with that requirement of it.
I should have asked Aaron for the file, but I imagine there, we have five copies of that somewhere.
I'm sure.
What?
I'm sure that you must.
We have, we have.
I know that Jeff has sent it.
And I've seen it, a copy of the deed? Is that in the?
That is not in the, in the, what we submitted, I don't believe it was on the list.
Okay, we need a copy of the deed. Eight copies of the current property survey?
Now, that can be current cop, doesn't have to be for Sambro, right?
No, we gotta reference the, because you do have one, you have, this is from the old application. We can't, we, we're not gonna go through and consolidate documents from the old application to the new application, so we have to, you gotta redo it all. So, I know you have a, and you'll reference the, this-
Eight copies, sorry.
Whichever this one is.
So, you're sorry, just to back up, you said eight copies of the survey?
Eight copies of the, of the, the-
Property survey.
The current property survey, and then you'll take information off that and put it on your drawings, too.
That's already on the, that's already submitted, yeah.
All right.
And you just need one copy of the deed, is that right?
Just one, one copy of the deed, yep. And then, seven copies of the proposed site plan, eleven by seventeen, thank you. And- Because we'll refer this out to, we'll refer it out to planning board. I think the last time, when I was chair, we had to refer it out to planning board if only just for them to give the opportunity to give an opinion. We, I wouldn't, we wouldn't be referring this out for any reason other than that, like we would do any others on a variance. It might have changed in the interim that I've not been chair.
Yeah, Jeff specifically revised this, which is why this is revised ten twenty-nine, to remove the planning board from that. And that was because he had a discussion with Matt, and Matt determined that there was no reason for them to be involved.
All right, I just wanna check that code section. I understand we're not, we wouldn't be referring it out for any specific questions. I get that. But I, but I, I do remember that we had to, to satisfy the code, the code did say that we had to, if we were issuing area variances, we had to potentially refer it out to, we, refer it out to, to planning board, and then they could not give an opinion or, or yes, depending. And it would be an opinion based on planning board considerations, not them trying to be ZBA.
So, would that need to occur before a public hearing?
No, we would do, we would do, we would do that, we would do that in concert with it. In other words, we would refer it out, if we, if we were gonna go for a public hearing in two weeks, we would send this to the planning board now, you know, along with the, when we write the legal ad and stuff. And then, they would, they would comment at the, at their next, the next meeting. Usually, the way the schedule worked, the schedule worked, they could comment. It's, I, I can, I'll have to clarify that, but I don't think the code changed on it.
If you could just keep us in a loop on that, if that is the case, because it's our understanding that that is not required, but-
Right, okay.
We just, we'd like to know that, and, and like to know, if it does in the code, go to the planning board, we would like to know if it's on the agenda and be able to participate.
Right. What, when I was chair, this was always a, a being live on it, that, you know, because what you're doing is you're, you, you're, you're sending applicants to, to make a plea for the planning board for a variance from ZBA, which got kind of ridiculous. Nobody did it. And what, and when it started out, twenty years ago, it was, the planning board would give an opinion about whether we should grant or not grant a variance. And I worked with the village attorney, Steve Gappa, who's long gone. And, and Steve agreed with me that they should just be commenting if there was a planning board issue. It's the same when we, if we have to refer out a two thirty-nine M, they call it, to the county planning board. And on that, if they did have an opinion, it would only be from a planning board perspective, i.e., it wouldn't be anything to do about the building, it would be about, you know, traffic, safety, a car pulling out in the street, that kind of thing. Anyway, so, we, we can check that, I can check that tomorrow.
Yeah, I know, but Bill, I want to know if, if that is the case, we would like to, I mean, obviously, we've already had a discussion with Jeff about it, which is why he revised the referral. And again, he, he contacted Matt Francisco, they didn't have any comment on it, so we'd just like to know. And, and the re, part of the reason I'm specifically asking you to keep in the loop on that was because this application was actually discussed at your last meeting, and we weren't notified of it being on the agenda. So, I wanna just make sure that any time, yeah.
Did we?
You did, you did, because you, we saw, we found out about it, it was on, it was in the meeting minutes? And it was on, so I saw the video where, where you discussed whether or not Aaron could be part of the board.
Oh, oh, that's hard.
I just wanna make sure that any meetings were made aware of, and we can be in attendance of it.
Okay.
That's the only reason I'm coming.
Yeah, that was a spontaneous issue that, we, we were unaware personally that Aaron had bought a house across the street from us. So, he, he spontaneously raised that issue, the rest of the board was unaware of any of that, and he was just referring it for recusal purposes, that he was like, I'm thinking, I'm just gonna refuse myself in that. So, rather than carry any further discussion on it, we just simply said, we, we need an acting chair, period.
You know, it was actually on the agenda.
So, well, that, he puts together the agenda.
Okay, okay.
Agenda, right, right.
Dylan noted, we understood.
So, are there any other materials that you need?
Proposed site plan, on your site plan, you're showing the footprint of the existing buildings.
Yeah, just for the record, we're not the architects for the project, Siegler Henderson Studio, the original architect is still acting architect.
Oh, okay.
We're, we're assisting with some of the, because of our interest in accessory structures in the village, that's why we've become involved.
Okay.
So, that's, that, but that was on, on the plan, like, this drawing was made a part of it. So, so do we need to provide you with additional copies of this, as part of our submittal, to get the referral?
Well, if we have eight copies of the proposed site plan. I'm just reading from the application checklist on the ZBA application, so you have all this. So, all I'm doing is just going down the checklist. I'm not asking for anything that we don't ask anybody else. And presumably, with the eight copies, we'll have plenty to refer out to different places. The only thing I'm gonna check on is, and because I've been out of the loop on some of the mechanics for a couple of years, is the referrals. Do we need to do a two thirty-nine M on this, and do we need to do a, a referral on the planning board? Eight copies of the site plan, eight copies of the proposed design plans. And I imagine that your packet, you know, has all that. And that's what we need. I, I thought, I wish, I, Aaron should have, I can't, I'm sure, did you, did you give eight copies of everything in?
I, I don't recall if it was eight or not, when I dropped them off.
But you dropped a package.
Yeah, yeah, and Jeff said everything was good to go, so, but I don't remember if it was eight.
Oh, all right, so-
I got a bunch printed, I just, I didn't tell you.
Yeah, all right. So, presuming, you know, we have eight copies of all that, can I just, just, just let me see this one, sorry. All right, so. There's the site plan, there's the lot. Setbacks. Variations. All right, so we need eight of that. And then, we should talk about who we're gonna be referring this out to. I think on the last one, you had an extensive list of, of people that you would notify, that, you know, what the neighborhood would be, so to speak.
Do you wanna do that, Sam? I don't know, do we, do we, do we need to do that extensive of a list, or?
It was a pretty long list. I saw it in the old file, this is my old file.
I have, I have that list, I can-
You have that list?
Yeah, it was particularly extensive. Do we, do we need to go to that extent again?
Probably, because it was so controversial.
Oh, yeah, we would, we would do the list.
But to the letter of the, as a new application, to the letter of the code, do we need to go to that extent?
Only, we're only trying to conserve some of the expenses that we've had to go through, because typically, it's adjoining properties, correct? And, and in that case, that there was for some-
But it's also a line of sight. You mean, we're talking about as far as notifying?
Yeah.
Others?
Notification of adjacent properties. I mean, if, if it's required.
We've done line of sight, especially, you know, considering, you know, it, you know, the, the structure itself is so far forward, up, up to the front of the street, up, up to the property line. So, whoever's impacted by it is typically the way we have done it in the past.
I've just never, I've never had that requirement, so I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, we did it, we did it the last time, as you, as you know, but mostly for that reason. And I think Aaron was even the one who had brought it up, brought it up at the time, but throughout our, you know, time on the board, we've always done it, whoever's impacted visually, who can see it. And if this was a house that was nestled and settled back, you know, in amongst the rest of the house, it'd be unlikely to impact, but it was the fact that it was as far forward as it was. And, and also, there were issues that seemed to be raised with regards to, you know, parking and, you know, visibility of cars coming in and out of the property, if the house is so far forward.
We're gonna need to get into that tonight, if you don't mind.
No, 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 I don't, I mean, just, it was just an impact thing, that's all, that's-
You know, having been beaten to hell, in my experiences on the board with people not being notified or aware of a project, there's the list. My instinct is to go with it and just do it, so. We'll do the list, you put up the sign, nobody could say that they weren't aware that this was being proposed. So, as long as we have eight of everything we've talked about, or whoever, you know, the, the list, the numbers that we did, then we're talking about, what about putting it on for two week? Our next meeting is two weeks from now?
So, I won't be here in two weeks?
You won't?
You'll still have, will you still have a quorum without me? I'm sorry.
Down to three, now, if it's a, if it's a, would this be for a hearing?
Well, it'd be a public hearing, and, and this, this is, this is a, okay, so, for us to pass anything, we need a minimum of three. So, when we schedule something, it's your absolute right to say, you know, I'd rather schedule it where I have the most chance. And that would be when all board members that could be are here. So, if you want, if you, if you're desperate to rush and do it two weeks from now, you could probably get that. I think we, three of us could be here, but you'd have to get, you know, you can't, it, it would have to be unanimous.
Right.
And so, with four, you could have one, you know, no, and three yeses, and you still pass. So, it's your call.
At what point would there be a decision on whether in the HDRB combined scenario would be an option?
I think it, when we get into the, the, our first meeting-
Public hearing.
Public hearing, we start talking about the merits and what the issues are, and this and the other, and then the board would start to, to talk about potentially having that.
So, the decision wouldn't happen until a public hearing has started? You wouldn't have that decision now, or in between now and Thursday, Tuesday?
No, no.
Yeah, what do you think?
Yeah, I think we wouldn't allow to have as many board members as we can, we're not, you know?
Right, so, the, the next hearing day, we go every two weeks, right? Get our calendars out.
Trip plan before I join the board, so I'm, I'm fine for the following one.
So, the nineteenth works for everybody.
That's the twentieth, well, that's the nineteenth? December nineteenth?
That works for me.
Yep, it's on my calendar.
Okay. Okay, so, why don't we, we'll write a, we'll write a legal ad for the nineteenth, seven thirty. We'll open up a public hearing. In the meantime, you, you'll get all the copies in.
Right.
And I'll find out about referrals. And that'll be good, we'll give some time to, if we have to make a referral, make a referral. And you'll be apprised of all the issues in terms of referrals.
It's been a little while since we've sent out letters in Cold Spring, and we've been doing it on other places for ZBA, but do, is there a form?
A what?
A form letter?
Form letter?
Yeah, that you provide, that says the date and the time, and the, do you draft that? Can some municipalities, the municipality drafts the letter, and then we send it out?
Oh, yeah, we, we draft the letter.
Do it in Spanish.
We, we, oh, you mean, you're, what you're gonna send out?
Yeah.
We're gonna give you a copy of the legal ad.
Great.
And you're just gonna send that out? Yeah, yeah. And it dawned on me that the legal ad that we wrote the last time, probably works with what you have going now. I'm so discombobulated, because I'm, I'm dealing with, I didn't realize I was gonna do that. Here it is. Is this, this is the, this is your old legal ad, and it seems to me that nothing's really changed other than, than a date. The dimensions haven't changed.
Dimensions have changed.
In this application, we've added a parking spot.
Okay.
I'm not sure if that's on that, or not.
One off-street parking, one to everywhere, so that's consistent, right? One off-street parking, because, yeah. You're probably right here. Okay, so the, the referral doesn't refer, for example, to the fifty by fifty foot square, but this does, but, so that, that it's not in here. but this does, but, so that, that it's not in here. We're, we're not sticking to the ones that Jeff has stipulated, I'm just-
No.
Just want to be clear. Yeah, things are, right?
Mm-hmm. So, that'll be, that'll, we'll send you that updated with the, with the proper date.
Right.
And that'll be what you'll send out. All right, so, we'll, we'll, we'll put it on for the, um, nineteenth?
Yes.
Seven thirty. And you'll get your stuff in, and I'll find out tomorrow, I'll make some calls, find out about referrals, and I'll email you.
And, um- How, how much in advance does the sign have to be out, I can't remember.
I remember.
Okay.
It's specified.
It's in the, it's in your code packet?
Mm-hmm.
All that's in the packet, I think.
Yeah, it's like ten days, you know, my understanding, so, yeah.
That's a newer requirement, too.
Yeah.
It's good.
Now, should we look at anything to make sure if we're not gonna see them again before they show up for the public hearing, that, that the documents that we're gonna see, that we're comfortable with?
Once you, once you, um, once you, um, submit all your, all your stuff, ask Jeff to call me and notify me, and I'll come down and just take-
I'll take a look.
Okay. Yeah, just so that we don't suddenly say, oh, wow, we're in the middle of hearing, we need, we need it. Uh, the other thing is, you know, photographs going up and down the street may be helpful, just to-
We have that, that'll be a part of our HDRB application, too.
And, let's see, did we get an overhead the last time, just like we had an overhead in this case?
Yeah, so do, do a Google, you know, do a Google map, show us the neighborhood and- Eric, do you have any comments?
No. Okay.
Because of the density of the material and the, and the variances that we're requiring, are we able to show a PowerPoint to consolidate it? It'll probably make it much faster as a presentation.
What, now or then?
No, there.
Then.
Last time, we were together with a PowerPoint presentation.
Oh, that went on forever.
Was, uh, three hundred and eighty-five slides, so, how many slides?
This is not.
I'm, I'm pulling your leg, okay, yeah, that's fine, yeah.
I think, yeah, yeah, I guess we don't really have, uh, we have the, that wall.
Yeah.
Is that where you typically show things?
Uh, I, my experience, um, I can't remember what we did the last time, um, you know, um, there is fine.
Looks easier to, to move.
Yeah, looks fine, yeah. And put it on the table, you can do it there, the audience can see, very good.
Yeah.
All right.
That's it, right?
I think that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you, see you in, so, just email me that you put the stuff in, I'll come check it on.
We had somebody for the pub here.
Are you, are you here for this application?
No, no, I was just here to observe.
Oh, okay, all right, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Make a motion to close the, close the meeting?
I'll move to close the meeting.
A second.
Well, favor.
All right.
Next thing. Hopefully you'll join the board.
Hopefully you'll join.